Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to countycommissionbroadcast@kpts320west21st, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
Good morning and welcome to the December 17th, 2014 County Commission meeting. I'm Brittany Clampett and we're glad you're joining us this morning. We just want to let you know about a few things we've got going on around the county. The Red Cross Battle of the Badges from now until January 4th will be collecting blood donations, so go give blood, set up an appointment with the Red Cross, and then in the meantime, vote for your favorite first responders. You can vote for Wichita and Sedgwick County law enforcement, fire and EMS, and so join this friendly competition and give to a good cause. You can find out more information at redcrossblood.org. Winter Wednesdays at the Sedgwick County Zoo is in place, so as you have family coming in for the holidays, take some time, get the family and go to the Sedgwick County Zoo for $2.50 admission, so a good time to spend with the family and support the local zoo. This morning commissioners, we're gonna have a little game, get the last meeting of the year kicked off with a little trivia for Christmas, and so Commissioner Peter John, we will start with you. All right, which of these famous people was not born on December 25th? A) Clara Barton, who is the founder of the Red Cross; President Calvin Coolidge; Humphrey Bogart; or Jimmy Buffett?
I think I'm gonna try and get you to pass on this, and let me begin by, if you could, I'm having a hard time seeing you because we've got kind of the monitor in front of me, and let's see if I can, how long it takes me for my Google to come up here and I can come up with the answer for your question on who wasn't born on December 25th. But I'll be happy to defer to my colleagues if any of them happen to have the answer right in front of them.
Bring it on, I'll go to, I'm ready.
All right, all right, we, it is Calvin Coolidge. He was actually born on the 4th of July, but everybody else was born on December 25th, so one of those unfortunate Christmas birthdays. All right, so Commissioner Peter John, since you deferred from the last one, we're gonna go with, we're not letting you get out of this one. So, in what year did Christmas become a federal holiday? 1790, 1823, 1858, or 1870?
No.
And no cheating.
He now knows Calvin Coolidge, though.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm ready, I'm ready with Calvin Coolidge on that one, but...
Best guess.
Best guess, well, I'm gonna pick A.
A, actually, it is 1870, because after the American Revolution, English traditions were not popular here in America, and that included Christmas. All right, Commissioner Unruh. Who is responsible for creating our modern version of Santa Claus with his poem, "A Visit from St. Nicholas," also known as "The Twas the Night Before Christmas"? Was it A) Mark Twain; B) Clement Clarke Moore; C) Charles Dickens; or D) Washington Irving?
Oh, you know, these are hard questions.
We can't go easy on you!
Where's Christie?
Okay, this is, you are...
Well, we're learning new things every day.
Well, we are learning things, that's good. I'm gonna go with B.
Actually, you are correct? Very good?
Oh, thanks, Tim.
Oh yeah, I know all about Santa Claus. And you guys better be good out there, by the way.
Commissioner Skelton, which of these towns in America is not a real town? A) North Pole, Alaska; B) Santa Claus, Indiana; C) Rudolph, Wisconsin; or D) Prancer, Georgia?
I think I've been to all those places except for D.
That is correct. There is actually a, oops, excuse me, there is a Dasher, Georgia, however. And then Commissioner Ransah, how many candy canes does the US produce each year?
I'll go with D.
Gonna go with D, 2.69 billion. Actually, it's B, 1.76 billion, and if you laid those end to end, they would stretch nearly 167,000 miles and concurled the earth 6.7 times. So there's some Christmas trivia that you may not have known before, but of course, we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started, so Commissioner Unruh, if you would go ahead and kick us off.
Okay, Brittany, thank you for that introduction and education that we all received. But we can get our meeting going, but first of all, I'd want to recognize everyone who's here in the meeting today, thank you for your presence, and also want to welcome those who are watching by way of television. It's time I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, December 17th, 2014. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Rick Klein, Riverwalk Church of Christ. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
If I'd known trivia was a theme, I'd have brought some Bible trivia to keep the theme going. Let's bow together and pray. Holy God, we join our hearts in welcoming your presence into our lives this morning. We offer you our praise and gratitude for all that you are and all that you do. This is a day you've made, and we want to rejoice and be glad in it. And Lord, this is a season that causes us to reflect on our blessings and reminds us just how much we have to be thankful for. It also creates an atmosphere of giving as we consider your love and goodness poured into our lives. So may we pay attention to the opportunities we have to meet the needs of others, to share from our abundance. We're so grateful for the amazing generosity on display in our city and throughout the county as people willingly share resources with those who are living in the margins. Your spirit is alive and well in faith groups, businesses, and individuals as needs are being met. So whatever our faith background, may we continue seeking the peace and prosperity of our city. This morning, I also ask a blessing over these community leaders as they meet, and may their discussions lead to decisions that bring out the best in all who call Sedgwick County their home. And as we conclude this moment of reflection, I pray that more of us will experience a greater measure of the peace, goodwill, and joy that frame the songs of this season, and may the words of the music become the principles that guide us daily. And I pray this in the name of the One born to be the way, the truth, and the life. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor for being here this morning. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Commissioner Ransah.
Present.
Commissioner Skelton.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Chairman Unruh.
Present.
Next item.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting of November 12th, 2014. All commissioners were present.
Commissioners, you have the opportunity to review the minutes of November 12th and also the meeting minutes of November 19th and December 3rd. All commissioners were present at all meetings, are there any additions or corrections?
If not, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the meeting minutes of November 12th, November 19th, and December 3rd.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Skelton.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioners, before we call the next item, I think that we need to have an off-agenda item relative to the presentation of an award.
I move that we take that off-agenda item.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Skelton.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioners, before we call the next item, I think that we need to have an off-agenda item relative to the presentation of an award.
I move that we take that off-agenda item.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Skelton.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye.
And for this award presentation, I'd like to call on Kathy Sexton to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Kathy Sexton, City Manager in Derby. With me today are the City Managers also in Andover, Goddard, and Mulvane, Kent Hickson in Mulvane, Brian Silkott in Goddard, and Jenny McCoslin in Andover. We, we thank you for this time on the agenda. We're here to celebrate professional management and the career of Bill Buchanan, and he's surprised, surprise, Bill! Your staff did a great job, and the commissioners did a great job of sneaking us in here today. We appreciate the time. We all represent the Kansas Association of City and County Management, and we are a proud group of folks who help you, elected officials, manage the day-to-day work in cities and counties all over this state. And last week, we had our annual meeting in Manhattan, and we recognized Bill Buchanan for his career achievement, his decades of service across the country, and, and his years certainly here at Sedgwick County, and with, with the recognition is the Career Achievement Award, and we wanted to present it today. Bill couldn't be with us in Manhattan last week, and wanted to just recognize him and what he has meant to not only you all here in Sedgwick County, but to us in the profession and to, you know, in terms of leadership throughout the state. You all know that he has mentored a good many of us, a good many of us, and, and grown people who want to do professional management, and sometimes this business is not particularly rewarding in so many ways, but it is certainly a service and a calling, and we recognize Bill Buchanan for his service. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Kathy, and thanks to my colleagues. I am humbled by this, and I'm delighted to be a part of a profession of managers who celebrated our 100th anniversary this year as an international organization. Some of the things that occurred because of that 100th anniversary, we did some reflections. Communities that are managed by professional managers have higher bond ratings than those who don't. Communities that are managed by professional managers deliver services, police, fire, inspection, 10% less than communities are not. I'm proud to be part of that group, and thank you very much. I don't know, some of you may remember Jenny. She used to work here, and then she got a real job, and was one, probably one of my former students, just thank you.
Well, Bill, before you get away, we may have a comment or two, and I know this is a, that you really delight in this, but first of all, it was kind of enjoyable to get something on the agenda that you didn't either know about or approve.
We're scrambling this morning trying to figure what that was about.
Yeah, well, I played dumb, and it was easy for me, but I, I just want to express our appreciation for your service to Sedgwick County, and, and also commend the Kansas City County Manager Association for their excellent wisdom in, in offering you this award. But it's clear that you've had a wide range of influences, you've mentored and helped and guided a lot of other managers, and we see that, and we're, we're proud that you are the City Manager for Sed, or the County Manager for Sedgwick County. You've, you've, your professionalism and your experience and wisdom in guiding this county is certainly recognized and appreciated. Have a comment from Commissioner Norton?
Well, Bill, congratulations. You know, I so honor professionals in, that are accredited, that understand their roles in government, and, you know, not everybody knows that you were the president of the ICMA International, which is, what an honor for Sedgwick County to have someone of that magnitude to run that organization, which is not just Sedgwick County, or the state of Kansas, or the United States, but it is international, and we're very proud of your service here and what you've done to make this county as professional as it could possibly be. You know, one of the things that we, government takes a hitch on sometimes is that the private industry always does it better, and we can't be professional, and on and on and on, and I'm very proud that what you've brought to Sedgwick County is that highest level of professionalism and ability to run government in a, in a respectful manner that is efficient and effective and serves the people very well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, while we've got you up here, and maybe it's not quite roast time, I do have to note that it is a real pleasure that you've managed to bring not only a bunch of former county employees back to the Sedgwick County Commission Meeting Room in the form of the City Managers here, but there's City Managers coming over here, and sometimes there's been talk about how cities and counties crossing, crossing Central Avenue even, I've heard it said, but in this case, I think it's absolutely a delight to see four members of the, on the, on the city side coming to join us for our commission meeting this morning, and it speaks very well for you, and, and I wanted to thank everyone involved and glad to participate in this off-agenda item that even caught the manager by surprise.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Skelton?
Well, that alludes to what I want to say, Bill, because this is the first time I've actually seen you surprised in four years. So, you know, it's been a pleasure to work for you, with you, or have you worked for me, I mean, excuse me, or work with and work together, that's really what it's, what it is, is working together, 100%, and you're, you are one of the best men I've ever had a chance and opportunity and pleasure of working together with in my life.
Thank you.
You bet.
Well, Bill, I think in the next six months, there might be more of these, I don't know, but...
I hope not.
Okay. All right, very good, congratulations.
Thanks, thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Citizen inquiries, item D, request to address the Board of County Commissioners regarding the Northeast Senior Center.
Is Mr. Cordell Belcher here? I do not see him, so we will go to the next item.
New business, item E, resolution creating a road improvement benefit district in Sedgwick County, Kansas, and authorizing improvements therein.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Norton with Gummorn Bell, the county's bond counsel. I'm having trouble finding the PowerPoint presentation, so I think we'll just go back to the old-fashioned and wing this unless there's something I'm missing. The county has received a petition signed by 100% of the property owners proposing a public improvement on Ridge Road at K-42 for the Cessna addition. The owner's a property of that, it was the Cessna Aircraft Company. It is a project for street and drainage improvements, and I'm gonna get some assistance here, I hope.
Right here.
Got you.
There you go.
Thank you very much. This'll be a little easier to explain now. On the screen before you is a map depicting the location of the proposed benefit district and the improvement. You can see it's south of K-42, near the Cessna facility, south of the Mid-Connet Airport. A description of the property, there's just one tract proposed to be assessed for this improvement. Public Works has prepared an estimated project cost of approximately $146,273 for this street and drainage improvement. Again, there's only one property to be assessed that signed the petition, so that will all go against that property and be spread over a 15-year period if they don't prepay. Jim Weber from Public Works is here to address any questions that you may have with respect to the project. We've prepared a resolution which, if adopted, would create the benefit district, authorize the improvements to go forward, and to charge these project costs eventually to this property petitioning this request. I'd be available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Joe. Are there any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Norton?
Because I remember we've had several improvements in that area for Cessna over the years, and I think this just adds on to what they need to happen to continue to grow and, and have infrastructure around them that serves them well, so I'll make the motion that we take the recommended action and adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, commissioners, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Skelton.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Next item, please.
Item F, resolution authorizing the execution of an economic development incentive loan agreement between Sedgwick County and Fijiak Aero, subject to conditions, and authorize the transfer of budget authority from the Economic Development Reserve to the Economic Development Program.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Chris Cronus, your Chief Financial Officer. Fijiak Aero is a French company that was established in 1989 to provide parts to large aerospace customers. The company has been very successful in Europe and now is comprised of six European subsidiaries. Within the past year, Fijiak acquired a company based in Wichita called Sonica, which was located on 39th Street Nor, 39th Street North in the Webb Business Park, near NCAT, and Fijiak acquired Sonica because they were interested in expanding their business in North America, and now they are interested in establishing a North American headquarters from which to grow that, that segment of their business. The company sought proposals and investigated site options in a number of locations in North America. The finalists under their consideration included not only Wichita, but also sites in North Carolina, Louisiana, and Mexico. We are excited about the opportunity to have Fijiak house its North American headquarters here in Sedgwick County because of the company's growth history, their proven record of growth, and we believe that whoever is successful in landing the North American headquarters will have a leg up on future growth opportunities of the company in this hemisphere, and certainly we'd like to be in that position. The company has requested, as an incentive, a loan of $250,000 from Sedgwick County. They have requested the same amount of cash from the city of Wichita, and they have requested a five-year, 100% tax abatement on taxable property that should be, excuse me, should be added to their, their proposed new site. In return for those incentives, the company promises to place its North American headquarters in our community. It promises to invest $20.68 million in the development of that, that North American headquarters, and it will do that by purchasing land adjacent to the existing Sonica site in Webb Industrial Park and, and building two new buildings on that site. And finally, the company promises to add 200 full-time jobs over the next five years, paying an average wage of at least $39,520. The new jobs would be added at the rate of 30 in the first year, I'm sorry, 50 in the first year, 35 in each of the next three years, and 45 in the fifth year. Once the five-year period has been completed and the full ramp up to 200 jobs has been finished, the company's payroll in this community would be just under $8 million. The proposed county's property tax abatement has a value, we estimate, at just over $473,000. Because the development of the site that would be tax exempt is located within the boundaries of the city of Wichita, the award of that tax exemption will be made by the city, or is to be made by the city, and not by the county. The only action that is before you today is a resolution authorizing the $250,000 loan. The Center for Economic Development and Business Research has run the company's proposal through its benefit cost model as we require on all of these kind of projects, and it has determined that the county's cost, the present value of the county's costs to be incurred over a 10-year period would be $687,793. The county's net benefit, the present value of the net benefit derived over that same 10-year period, would be just over $1 million, and so there is a net public financial benefit to the county from this project that the Center for Economic Development and Business Research estimates at $317,834. That leads to, seed bar to compute a return on investment, a benefit to cost ratio of $1.46 of benefit for each $1 of public cost on this project, and that is well above the, the targeted threshold of gain for these kind of projects that is contained in the economic development policy that you have adopted. The action that's before you is the adoption of a resolution. This action today is a little bit different than these deals in the past because the, working with the city of Wichita and with our colleagues at the Greater Wichita Economic Development Coalition, we have developed a new template for the loan agreement that we would execute with companies. The, the template that has been used over the years, many people, including me, have, have said is somewhat confusing, it's subject to interpretation, it, it just is not a good document from a legal standpoint or from an operational standpoint, and so we have worked to develop a new contract form, a new agreement form, which is much more clear and frankly provides much better protection for the, the public partner in the transaction insofar as it requires the company to secure its loan in a variety of forms as opposed to merely committing to repay the funds should the company fail to, to fulfill its end of the deal. The new loan agreement still needs to be, the final review still needs to be performed by the county councilor's office. They have given preliminary approval of it thus far, sufficient for you to authorize a resolution today that would authorize me as Chief Financial Officer to execute an agreement in substantially the same form as the one that we have given you, subject to final review of the county councilor. And so if there are any questions about all of this, I would be happy to try and answer them. We do have a representative of the company in the audience, Jeff Russell, and if there are no questions, then I would recommend that you approve the resolution that's before you.
All right, thank you, Chris. We do have a question from Commissioner Ransah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. So, so Chris, we don't have a copy of the agreement in its final form.
You have an agreement that is substantially in the final form, and that's, that's not an uncommon practice. Whenever we do a bond financing, for example, we give you an agreement that is in near-final form, subject to final review by the lawyers, and that's the, the process that we're undertaking here.
Okay, so the answer's no, it's not in final form?
It is subject to some tweaking.
Okay. Now, I thought we changed our economic development policy to no longer do forgivable loans?
I don't think I've referred to this as a forgivable loan.
But what is it?
It's a loan.
Are they gonna pay it back?
If they don't fulfill their end of the agreement, then yes, they will have to pay it back.
But if they don't, they won't?
No, if they don't, we will get our, our repayment in the form of the economic benefit to the community and to Sedgwick County government.
So they're not gonna pay it back? How can you say it's not a forgiv, it's no different than any of the loans before?
Well, I would argue that it is different insofar as the county has much better protection with this new agreement form than past deals.
But it's still a forgivable loan?
It still has the same elements of the law. to secure its loan in a variety of forms as opposed to merely committing to repay the funds should the company fail to fulfill its end of the deal. The new loan agreement still needs to be -- the final review still needs to be performed by the county councillor's office. They have given preliminary approval of it thus far, sufficient for you to authorize a resolution today that would authorize me as Chief Financial Officer to execute an agreement in substantially the same form as the one that we have given you, subject to final review of the county councillor. And so if there are any questions about all of this, I would be happy to try and answer them. We do have a representative of the company in the audience, Jeff Russell. And if there are no questions, then I would recommend that you approve the resolution that's before you.
All right, thank you, Chris. We do have a question from Commissioner Ransaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. So, Chris, we don't have a copy of the agreement in its final form.
You have an agreement that is substantially in the final form. And that's not an uncommon practice. Whenever we do a bond financing, for example, we give you an agreement that is in near-final form, subject to final review by the lawyers. And that's the process that we're undertaking here.
Okay, so the answer is no, it's not in final form?
It is subject to some tweaking.
Okay. Now, I thought we changed our economic development policy to no longer do forgivable loans.
I don't think I've referred to this as a forgivable loan.
But what is it?
It's a loan.
Are they going to pay it back?
If they don't fulfill their end of the agreement, then yes, they will have to pay it back.
But if they don't, they won't?
No, if they don't, we will get our repayment in the form of the economic benefit to the community and to Sedgwick County government.
So they're not going to pay it back? How can you say it's not a forgivable -- it's no different than any of the loans before?
Well, I would argue that it is different insofar as the county has much better protection with this new agreement form than past deals.
But it's still a forgivable loan?
It still has the same elements of the loans that the county has traditionally done. We are providing an incentive to the company that is conditioned on the company's performance of certain commitments. And if the company succeeds in satisfying those commitments, then the county will not require repayment of the loan.
So why did we get rid of the word forgivable in our economic development policy?
I think it was at your insistence.
No.
That's my recollection.
It was my insistence. We wouldn't be doing this sort of thing at all. This is still a forgivable loan. I mean, we're just playing word games here. So that clarifies that. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, would you describe this? I'm looking at the material that's been presented to us for background. Is this a five- or 10-year agreement?
This is a five-year loan. And we are measuring the benefits and the company's obligation to fulfill those benefits over a 10-year period.
Okay, because on page eight of the pack of documents that I'd received from CE, the Center for Economic Development and Business Research of Wichita State, at five years, at one to five years, they showed present value, a present value of net benefits. I mean, we try and provide that correctly for the record, present value of net benefits of minus $154,211 and becomes positive out in years seven through 10, from the document I've got. I just wanted to try and get an understanding since the point that Commissioner Ransaw made in terms of we don't have a finalized agreement, whether we're talking about five years or 10 years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ransaw?
Yeah, I want to expand on that. So the return on investment was calculated for a 10-year period of timeframe?
Yes, sir.
But we only have the guarantee for the jobs for five years?
No, they are obligated to provide the jobs, to add the jobs over a five-year period. And then they will retain the jobs for the balance of the 10-year period.
Okay, so if any time they lose those jobs over the next 10 years, then the clawback remain -- how long does the clawback remain in effect, the whole 10 years?
The clawback, the repayment of the loan is tied to a five-year period. The other security, forms of security that the county has through this new agreement form extend for the 10 years. And through those additional forms of security, the county can obtain title to the property or can -- to the real property or to the equipment that should be acquired with the proceeds that the county has provided.
Afterwards. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other comment or discussion? Mike, Commissioner Peter John?
Well, I don't know if there's anyone here. I noticed a number of folks out in the audience who might have an interest in speaking on this issue. We could be remiss if we didn't give them an opportunity to do so, in my opinion.
Certainly. I see Mr. Gary Plummer stepping towards the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm Gary Plummer with the Wichita Metro Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here this morning in a very positive environment where we're welcoming a French-owned company to Wichita to establish their North American headquarters. I want to begin by expressing our thanks to the staff at the county who worked very hard with city staff and the folks at the Department of Commerce making this project a reality. As Mr. Cronus pointed out, this company had a lot of options as they were considering where to put down roots in North America. North Carolina was a very tough competitor for this. And so was the country of Mexico. Actually, most of their business in this hemisphere probably would continue to be in Mexico but for the purchase of the local company, Sonica. And we still compete for parts of their business with Mexico even after this location. During the last five years, this company has paid $508,000 in total property taxes to Sedgwick County. And during the next five years, they will continue to pay that level of property taxes even during the period of their abatement. We think this is a great project and a great moment in Sedgwick County's history when it comes to economic development and job creation. And we certainly hope that you will support this project this morning. I believe Gary Schmidt from GWDC would also like to make a comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Plummer.
Good morning, gentlemen. Gary Schmidt, InTrust Bank, 14,000 Pinnacle Drive. I've been aware of Sonica the last couple of years. Very excited to have them in Wichita. As Gary said, they pay approximately $500,000 a year in property tax now. Based upon our calculations, it looks like the cash out of $250,000 from the city and county over a 10-year period, the city would receive $501,000 and the county a little over $1 million. And I think Chris had said the same thing. But a great company in our community, expanding, that's exactly what we need when it comes to jobs, adding new jobs for the benefit of our community. So I just want to say thank you and encourage you to support this request.
Thank you, Gary. Is anyone else would like to speak?
Good morning. My name's Jeff Russell. I am a lifelong resident of Derby, Kansas, of course, in Sedgwick County. Worked my entire career in the aerospace industry, always based in businesses here from Wichita. Fijian is a well-known name across Europe, as mentioned before. They are brand-new to the U.S. They are brand-new to this area. Again, purchasing Sonica to build on the reputation that they already have. What basically Sonica or what Fijian does is they are a great machine shop. They machine a whole lot of parts. Here in Wichita, our site does all the processing for those parts as well as a lot of other companies around. We support the super-tier twos like Spirit, GKN, sites all across the U.S., PCC Aero Structures, sites all across the U.S., Triumph Aero Structures all across the U.S. This site that we have here, again, the primary activity right now is processing. Our growth plan basically takes us into the machining area, bringing that knowledge from France, placing it here. Our desire is to be more of a one-stop shop for all of our customers, vertically integrating the machining, the processing, the assembly work, therefore cutting down flow time, adding better value for our customers. Again, I'd like to thank the entire county team, city team. Everyone has helped us immensely through this process. As you can imagine, with our French leadership, it has been somewhat challenging at times, but they have been very receptive as well. Wish they could have been here to join us, but they had activities in France they're taking care of. Again, this is a very large investment for Fijian. We do intend on placing a corporate headquarters somewhere in the U.S. Bottom line is with this project, that location would be here in Wichita. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. We have a comment from Commissioner Norton.
Don't run off, Jeff.
Okay.
Well, we're glad that there's some homegrown folks that are going to be involved with this. We know as you have growth, you're going to be looking for the best and brightest. Some of those will come right out of Wichita. Some of them may be imported in here. Either of those are really great for the community. Talk about a little bit about how important being located right across from NCAT is to the thought process that this is. Because they train a lot of folks in manufacturing and the skills that you'll need. Did that figure into the decision?
Again, they purchased the company, they purchased that location prior to bringing me onboard, but it has been very advantageous for me, having it right across the street. I know all those people over there. I've been over there numerous times. We are definitely pulling resources from there. We are teaming with them. We actually have some intern-type program that we're working on to get their people out of the classroom into a real factory environment to help us and help them. The areas we're pulling from are primarily aircraft painters. They have a significant paint program over there as well as assembly work. Aircraft assembly is something new that we are -- another avenue of something new we're bringing to the site. That is actually my primary area of expertise. And that's what, one of the reasons they went and got me as the GM for the site. So yes, having NCAT right across the street with the WATC is definitely benefiting us.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. I think it's important to understand that for quite a few years, GWDC has brought together the power of some of the aviation community and their leadership to go internationally to air shows, to look out there internationally for companies that would like to come here. And it strikes me, the thing that's so exciting for me is the word headquarters. Because there was a time in the 80s and 90s, we were bleeding headquarters like crazy out of this community. And maybe it's only headquarters in North America, but it's still headquarters. And we don't have to think back too far to say we had space in Old Town, and the next thing you know, we have a European company, Airbus, that put a lot of engineers to work and really helped this community at a time when we were going the other way in aviation. So I don't have any problem supporting this today. I think it's a good investment. You know, I continue to hear jobs, 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 capitalization, capitalization, capitalization. What are you doing to make that happen? Well, yeah, sometimes this is risky business. But you know, we've got people that are local that understand this, the aviation industry. And if they're buying into it, if they think it's a good deal, if you've changed jobs to be part of this, I think that's pretty powerful for me. So I'm going to be supportive today. Just the idea that we're bringing 200 jobs and the idea that a North American headquarters, which will be making decisions for expansion, particularly in manufacturing, which we all know the state and the country is bleeding. And if we have the chance to move into more of that, I'm all for it. So thanks for being here today, Jeff. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else?
We have a comment from Commissioner Ransaw. Is that for Mr. Russell?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Russell. Mr. Cronus, Commissioner Ransaw?
Yeah, Chris, I want to follow up. You said we have, after five years, we have ways to get property, et cetera, if they don't meet their commitments?
Yes.
What part of the contract is that in?
If you take a look at the place where the exhibits will appear?
Yes.
That includes a mortgage on the property. It includes a security agreement on the property.
Yes.
It includes life insurance policy on key officer of the company. And all of those are referenced in the document itself.
Do we have those security agreements?
No.
Why not?
Well, as I said, the document is still being reviewed and tweaked by the lawyers, and that's, they will be added at the end.
Well, you said this is going to be approved in substantially the same form. We have several exhibits here that have nothing in them. And this is a significant portion of this contract, is it not? Is not the security agreement a significant portion of this contract for us as the county?
Well, I would suggest to you that the remedies that are contained on page nine that reference those exhibits provide the information that is required for approval of the agreement. That tells us how the county is protected. And additionally, by the way, in section three on page four of the agreement.
So you're telling, we don't need copies of the security agreement, the mortgage, anything like this?
Well, that's a judgment for you to make, but my answer to that would be no.
Well, I certainly disagree. I mean, this clearly is incomplete and premature at this time. I mean, we may have some disagreements about whether or not we should be doing forgivable loans, but I do appreciate that there's been some efforts to try and solidify the clawback provisions, et cetera. But before we approve something like this, we need to have all the information. We need to have the security agreement in front of us. So I have some concerns in that regard, as well as some other concerns. But all for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chase, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The document that we're using is designed to be an offer to the company. A company is negotiating with us. This is not a done deal. And so we've attempted to put into this document what our best offer is. And one of the pieces of this is the addition, as Mr. Cronus has said, to ask the company for a form of security so that in the event the company's performance is subpar, we have more than just a promise to repay you. We have a lien on tangible assets. The document is designed to provide some flexibility, okay? You would normally get one of those four demonstrations of security that are listed in there, not all four. And that's a point of negotiation. Will the company agree to securitize this agreement, or will they not? And that is yet to be determined. So if we brought to you a final document that was executed by both parties, it would be an automatic. They're going to do it. It's a done deal. And this document gives us the ability to negotiate in a public setting with the governments and the company. Does that help address your questions about why a mortgage, why a insurance policy, why a guarantee, corporate guarantee are not in the document today?
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, you just basically, I mean, you said it's not a done deal. So we're being asked to approve something. This won't come back before us again.
That's up to your legal counsel and the Commissioner's decision.
Well, I think it's been made very clear that it's, you know, they consider this substantially the same form, and we don't even know if they're going to agree to the security agreement. But Mr. Cronus says we have that guarantee for five years, but in fact, we don't have it. So we might approve this and might not end up getting any guarantee or any way to hold this for the full 10 years.
The remedies and the language in the contract is very specific today. It says that there's an obligation for 10 years for the company to reimburse the city and the county for funds that are dispersed if in the event they don't perform. And then there's punitive damages on top of that, depending on how poorly they might perform, as an example, if they were to close their doors. And so that's all written in the document today. And if that were to change, as you might suggest, I think Chris's comment was substantially the same way. If that was to change, I would say that's not substantially the same and would have to come back before you. Yeah, I wanted to make a couple of quick points. At the last GWDC meeting, we were given an opportunity to utilize the Brookings Institute and JP Morgan Chase to actually do a data-rich study and create a strategy that is designed for foreign direct investment instead of sort of a haphazard, let's try to bump into something good and then hang on to it. It was a unanimous vote by the GWDC that this makes so much sense that we are given an opportunity. By the way, we're only one of eight cities in the country who have been given this opportunity. And we're just applying, and we may not be accepted. But this is the kind of strategy that would help repeat what we're seeing here today. Governor Brownback has been intimately involved with this. He has telephoned Jean-Claude Millard, who is the president of Fijian. I've met with Jean-Claude Millard in Farnborough when I was there earlier this year. And I will tell you that Mr. Millard is a shrewd businessman and a very hard negotiator. I do honestly believe that we have a good shot at this, but this is not in any way, shape, or form a done deal. The last piece of it was that we're doing a five-year abatement for 100%. That's a little bit different. The company, Chris said the company asked for that. Quite frankly, the company asked for a 10-year 100%. And we said, no, we can't do that. Because in doing that, we would not be able to maintain the the policy that you have set up for a return on the investment. So, this is not a, we're just handing the company everything that they've asked for. Any other questions?
Thank you, Tim. We have a question here from Commissioner Peter John.
Yeah. Let me ask you, Tim, and I'll leave this open for any of the other folks who've testified, and I appreciate you all coming down and discussing your perspective on this issue that's in front of us this morning. I look at this, and I think, all the language I'm seeing, this is a five-year agreement. Would you agree with me on that point?
No, I don't think I would. I believe that the date is not put into the document, because it is, the way it's written, it says on the maturity date, and the maturity date is so many years past the execution date. Well, we don't know when the execution date is, so therefore, I can't have a maturity date. So, that date is not in the document today, but it's designed to be a 10-year obligation, not a five-year.
Well, I appreciate it. Appreciate you adding that distinction and point, because we've obviously had some discussion on it this morning. I was a little bit surprised, I've got a Wichita Eagle article from May 9th this year announcing and basically talking about Fijiak has plans to grow in Wichita, basically said that they purchased a Wichita company, Sonica, and that they were going to, was basically that the office that they'd, the building they'd acquired was renamed Fijiak Aero North America and has desire to make Wichita its North American headquarters. And I'm probably going to mispronounce this name, but in this article, the first Vice President of Fijiak Aero, Vice President of Business Development, and please help me out if I'm wrong here, Hussein Benou?
Mm-hmm.
Benou? Benou? My French isn't very good, but basically, he's quoting here in terms of saying at that time, "The heart of Fijiak North America will be in Wichita," and they have major customers here. I was, I had the privilege earlier this week of visiting another supplier to some of the major aircraft companies here in town. Actually, not actually, the company I was visiting was not in Sedgwick County, but it's not too far away, and they were talking about how, basically, they needed physical proximity to be close to, to be close to their customers, and I think that was a key criteria for their location in south-central Kansas where they were at. And I looked at Fijiak as a machine shop being the same way. So, since I've got a news article kind of announcing the corporate headquarters back in May, is this old news?
I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and let him share what his opinion of that is, but I would say that since that time, there have been two plant managers and a tremendous amount of change in what was thought to be, in May, the course of action. Not the least of which was brought about by a consultant that was hired by the company and asked, "What is the standard incentive package that I should ask for? What is the standard?" And the standard is 10 years. And when we came back and said, "No, five years is what we're offering with some cash in addition." Quite frankly, Mr. Millard told me that he said, "All right, that starts the clock over. We're going to begin looking at other locations." And with regard to your proximity comment, their customers are in North Carolina, and they would be closer to, one of their customers is in North Carolina, and they would have proximity there. So, they chose a specific location that they would be considering for this facility.
Well, I understand Spirit's got facilities in North Carolina, just like they have here. Just this article talked about at that time, you know, planning to hire 175 people in the next 15 to 24 months, so that would have been roughly six months ago, half a year ago, so that, subtracting, you know, nine to 18 months was part of the plan, according to this Eagle article. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything else?
I think not, thank you. Mr. Cronus, I have just a couple of questions. I know that the state is pretty guarded about their involvement in economic development initiatives, but is the state also participating here?
I suspect they are, but they will not tell us.
And has the city council already approved their participation?
No. No, they will approve it after the first of the year, in part because of the holiday schedule, but also because, since the city will be the entity that is authorizing the tax abatement, the company has two choices in how they obtain that tax abatement, either through the issuance of industrial revenue bonds, which would be issued by the city, or through the award of an economic development abatement under state law. And my understanding is that the company hasn't yet determined how it wishes to finance the improvements, and therefore, it doesn't know, the city doesn't know which form of tax abatement is going to be provided.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. I don't see anyone else asking to speak, I just make my comment that I'm going to be supportive of this. I think our efforts in economic development, over the years that I've been aware of it and involved in it, is clear that we are looking for primary jobs, jobs that are manufacturing jobs, jobs that come to our community through a company who wants to sell their product not only in near proximity, but also has a market outside the area. So, I'm thinking with the amount of investment that they're contemplating, the amount of employees that they're going to hire, that this fits all the goals of our economic development efforts. It also, I think is, it will have a ripple effect in our economy for our aviation industry and for all the associated members that produce parts and that have an interest in the aviation supply chain in our area. So, to me, it seems like it's a fit for our community. It seems like the return on investment that we've calculated is, meets that threshold, and to have 200 jobs and a $20 million investment in our community for our $250,000 investment of cash is worthy of our support, and so, I'm going to support the item here. Commissioners, is there other comment? What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution. I'll ask the chair to sign.
Say it.
And we have a motion and a second, and we have discussion from Commissioner Ranzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I share some of the same concerns that Commissioner Peter John had about the article, and clearly, they've already bought a company here, and they're hiring, and they have plans to be here. You have the but-for argument, I'm not sure that passes in this particular case. By my calculations, if the average salary was reduced by 12 cents an hour, then they could recover the $250,000 in five years. So, that shows you just how, I don't think this $250,000 has to be a deal breaker at all. But beyond that, my biggest concern is this contract that we're being asked to approve. It's incomplete. And, you know, paragraph three that you alluded to, Chris, it points to all the exhibits that we don't have. So, we're lacking a lot of things here from the commission. I think, I think it would be prudent for this, I think we're going too fast, and this is premature. Clearly, the city of Wichita hasn't approved this yet, there's still some negotiating going on. I think we need to hold off on this until we have more details, we have information, we actually have the security agreement and all the stuff we're supposed to have, and they've ironed out all the details with the city of Wichita. Let's not rush into this and be premature, I'm not sure why we would want to do that. So, I'll make a substitute motion that we table this issue until such time, negotiation of the city of Wichita being completed, and we have a more complete document for us to consider.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, we have a substitute motion and second. Commissioner Peter John, do you have discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will briefly comment on the substitute motion that I seconded, because many of the concerns I expressed in the questions of the folks who are here and Mr. Cronus are part of this, and I think we've got the cart in front of the horse, so I will be supporting the substitute motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the substitute motion? Seeing none, we will vote on the substitute motion to defer. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzo.
Aye.
Commissioner Skelton.
No.
Commissioner Norton.
No.
Chairman Enruh.
No. Substitute motion fails, so we still have an underlying motion on the table to adopt the resolution. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Ranzo.
Well, obviously, I don't have to not be supportive of this motion, I can't support approving an incomplete document. And I'm disturbed that a majority of this commission is prepared to do so. I don't believe that's good policy, I don't believe that's good government. You wouldn't do it in the private sector, but I guess this is what they mean when they say you can't run the government like a business. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Peter John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to quote another elected official who said, "Well, you've got to pass the document to find out what's in it." The concern I have with this issue, and I'm going to not try and repeat points that I've earlier made, but try and add a couple of things that I don't think have gotten the attention that they deserve. First off, we've got the study in front of us from CEDBR, and they quite carefully say that they're not, the numbers that they use are basically the numbers that the company provided, and so, they have kind of put a qualification on them for there that always makes me, I mean, that's standard, but it's a concern all the time that I'm there, and I'll put it in this context. The discussion is, is this going to be a corporate headquarters, but the jobs that we're talking about here are going to pay an average of less than $40,000 a year, albeit almost $40,000, but less than that, and I'm thinking corporate headquarters. Most of the corporate headquarters I'm aware of, the job levels are larger than that. Now, having said that, the information I've been able to find about Fijiak is the same as, we had a discussion with an American company a couple of weeks ago, and even though this proposal's terms and benefits is about a little over two and a half times larger than the one that I voted against a couple of weeks ago, they're a fine company, I'm glad they decided to purchase on their own back earlier this year and acquire property and acquire a Wichita company and make publicly announce plans to expand here. Welcome to the competition, but our role as elected officials is to basically provide a fair and level playing field, and there's been a lot of community discussion on this. I look at how the voters have handled issues in 2012 and just last month, and so, my votes today, Mr. Chairman, are going to reflect that fact, and I share the reservations. I would make the point, there was some discussion about the company perhaps going someplace else internationally, and that's certainly their prerogative, but let me share this. Well, we've certainly struggled with the rule of law here in the United States in the last few years. Overseas, it's been much worse, and when I look at our neighbors to the south and look at where the people are voting with their feet, where they're trying to move to, and not where they're going, where they're coming from, I think that still indicates that if you really want to pursue the American dream, the United States is a lot better than many, many other options that are out there. So, my vote today is going to be in support of a level playing field for all, economic development for all, I'm going to publicly support the governor's tax policies, because I think that their location of this company and expansions by other firms in the industry is a result of what he's put in place with his policies. But having said that, the proposal we have in front of us is incomplete, and since we're still struggling in terms of, can't even figure out for sure whether we're talking about a five or 10-year or some other date, because the date's not specified, as was pointed out, my vote today is going to reflect those facts. Thank you, Mr. John.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Cronus, is there, in your opinion, are we exposed to any liability from some of the lack of detail that the commissioners have referenced? This agreement sets up the parameters for our making an economic development incentive with this company, and those numbers won't change? Are there other details that might create some significant hazard for us?
Not that I'm aware of, and I believe that's why you have the protection of the county counselor approving the final form of the agreement before I can execute it.
All right, thank you. Well, I will continue to reiterate the fact that this is an opportunity for us to attract headquarters here from an international company, going to put $20 million worth of investment in our community, not in Louisiana, or Mexico, or North Carolina, or wherever. We're going to get 200 jobs. These are jobs that our community typically responds to, they're well-paying jobs, and this is an opportunity for us to have a win, not just in the competitive nature of it, but a win for our community. And so, I'm going to continue to be supportive. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Peter John.
No.
Commissioner Ranzo.
No.
Commissioner Skelton.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Chairman Enruh.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Thank you for all the representatives from the chamber, GWDC, and Mr. Russell, thank you for being here. Next item, please.
Item G, resolution authorizing the making of certain improvements to the Sedgwick County Courthouse complex and providing for the payment of the cost thereof.
Commissioners, during the summer of this year, you'll recall that you accepted a staff recommendation that the county entered into an agreement to acquire the office building that commonly is referred to as the IRS Building. It's located at the corner of Third Street North and Water, adjacent to City Hall. The county's desire for that building was driven by a need to obtain space to house the Metropolitan Area Building Code Department, which, as you know, has been consolidated. The city continues to maintain staff in City Hall, the county continues to main staff in the Public Works Administrative Building on South Seneca, and there was a perceived need, a real need, to be able to combine those two staffs in order to gain efficiencies and improve the coordination of activities between city staff and county staff. Additionally, the county needs space to replace the main tag office that is located at the corner of Murdoch and Water. You know the condition of that building, we have been in discussion for some years about the need to replace it. There were adopted CIP projects for each of those needs. When the opportunity to acquire the IRS Building surfaced, it occurred to us that that gave us a chance to combine those two CIP projects, excuse me, and in addition, to bring into that building other county offices that currently are housed in leased space, and put them in space that the county owns, and thereby, we would be able to house all of those operations for a total cost that was less than the county had planned on spending for the two approved capital improvement projects and was spending for the leased space of the Appraiser, the Sheriff's Professional Standards Unit, and Environmental Resources. The project was placed into the CIP as a replacement for those two projects that I mentioned for MABCD and Tag Office, and it was estimated to cost no more than $15,755,000 for acquisition of the building and renovation of the building. The project was programmed in the CIP to be funded with bond proceeds that would be generated by the sale of general obligation bonds in the last half of 2015. The reason that we proposed to sell the bonds that late in the year in relation to when we are proposing to acquire the building and do the project is that that enables us to determine with a fairly high degree of accuracy to determine with a fairly high degree of accuracy the precise amount of bond proceeds that we're going to require. It eliminates the prospect that we might sell too many bonds because the project comes in under our cost estimate, and that would open us up to the potential for arbitrage penalties by the federal government. Or conversely, selling too few bonds. That is, selling bonds based on estimated cost and then encountering some unforeseen problem during the construction of the building and not having enough funding to complete the project because the bonds had already been sold. The tax code, the federal tax code, allows tax-exempt bond proceeds to be used to reimburse project costs that are incurred prior to the sale of the bonds under certain conditions. First and foremost, those conditions are that the governing body approve a resolution that I refer to as a resolution of intent. But essentially, it's a resolution through which the governing body declares the necessity of the project and declares its expectation that that project will be funded with bond proceeds and its intent to incur certain costs for that project prior to the sale of those bonds. That, therefore, that resolution, therefore, allows for the cash balances that are used to pay project costs prior to the bond sale with the bond proceeds once the sale has occurred. Including the issuance costs, the transaction costs, we are estimating that the bond issue will be an amount of approximately $16,040,000. The estimated yearly principal and interest cost to repay that bond issue would be $1.3 million for the first 10 years and $780,000 for the second and final 10 years that the bonds remain outstanding. The bonds can be issued under state law as general obligation bonds, that is, bonds pledging the full faith and credit of Sedgwick County Government. Because several years ago, Sedgwick County adopted a charter resolution to define courthouse, which is, in state law, you are authorized to sell general obligation bonds without referendum to fund courthouse or courthouse improvements. And you adopted a charter resolution several years ago to define courthouse as any county office facility located within three blocks of the building that we are in right now. And so, because the IRS building is within that perimeter, we are legally authorized to issue general obligation bonds to finance that building. And that's what we are proposing to do. These bonds, as general obligation bonds, would count against the county's statutory debt limit. That limit is 3% of the county's tax base, which is an amount that was $145,185,000 as of the end of last year. Including this proposed bond issue of about $16 million, at the end of 2015, the county will have a total of approximately $46 million of outstanding general obligation debt subject to that statutory ceiling. So, we will remain well within the statutory ceiling. In addition to the statutory ceiling, the county's debt policy provides five ratios that, in combination, serve as a policy limit on the amount of debt of any sort that the county will incur. And the issuance of these bonds will not cause the county to exceed the thresholds that are contained in the county's debt policy. The action that's before you today is the resolution of intent. It authorizes the county administrative staff to proceed with the project. It declares the project to be necessary. And it declares your expectation that that project will be funded with bonds to be sold at a future date. You will have two additional opportunities to take action regarding the sale of the bonds. And so, the action that you take today sets the process in motion, but it is not an irrevocable action. You will have two additional opportunities, if you choose to do so, to decline to issue the general obligation bonds that are proposed to fund this. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. The resolution that's before you was drafted by Joe Norton and his colleagues at Gilmore &amp; Bell, who is the county's bond counsel. And I'm sure he's in the room here and would be happy to answer any technical questions that you have about either the resolution or the legalities behind the resolution. If you have no questions, I would recommend that you take the action that has been recommended.
We have a question. Commissioner Ransaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Chris, we could fund this with, you said, the general obligation bonds and no vote by taxpayers because of our charter resolution?
Correct.
If this had been outside of that three-block area, how would we fund it?
With public building commission bonds.
Okay. Now, this is... What are we doing with respect to our real estate contract that we entered into?
My understanding is that the contract was entered into, subject to a due diligence period. During that due diligence period, the county identified a number of required repairs to the building, negotiated with the seller about those repairs, and has come to an agreement with the seller to reduce the original price of the building by an amount of money that we estimate will cover the cost of those repairs that we've identified. I believe that we are planning to proceed with the... To close on the transaction later this week, should you take this action today.
Okay. So, you said we'll have other opportunities with respect to this bond to approve or disapprove later on?
Yes.
But the contract itself, once we do that, then we're... It's a done deal?
Then we own the building, yes.
Right. Do we still have time that we can extend that real estate... We could still extend that. We already extended it once.
I haven't been involved in those negotiations. I would guess, in theory, yes, but I don't know how... I don't know whether the seller would agree to that or not. I haven't had any discussions.
Okay. Well, I have some serious concerns about this. I'm not going to be supportive of this particular motion. Quite frankly, I think we need to extend our due diligence time period again for another 30 days at least. There's serious concerns with respect to this. I think the flaws or the problems we found with the building, I think those need to be fixed before we purchase it. I'm particularly concerned that we're paying millions of dollars too much for this building. I've had people tell me it shouldn't be worth more than $3 million. And then, recently, we've had a building close by. I think it has a little more square footage that the school district sold for $1.4 million, I think. So, and we're spending $5 million for a building. And I've had a lot of people contact me, some citizens, and they're frustrated about how we're spending their tax dollars. I have lots of questions on this. This is another issue we must not rush into. I would encourage us to table this and request an extension of our real estate agreement for another 30 days so we can continue to address these very important issues. And another concern I have is the renovation costs have been estimated to be over $100 a square foot. And that was one of the options in the architectural report. Another option was to renovate it at the cost of $15 to $20 a square foot. Now, we were not told about that by staff, unfortunately. But going forward, you know, if we purchase this building for at least $2 million more than what we should, I can assure you, we're not going to spend $100 a square foot in renovations. So, you... Staff needs a plan on spending closer to $15 to $20 a square foot. We're not going to continue to fleece the taxpayers of Sedgwick County on this particular deal as we move forward. I may not be able to do anything about what's going to happen today, but I think in the future, we'll have a little more say in this particular issue and others. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Peter John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, can you talk about parking? That was one of the concerns I'd raised when this issue first came up and reflected my vote when that first came up as one of the concerns. I understand that this was in front of the city council yesterday, and I've had some outlines presented. But I'd certainly like to find out if we have a parking agreement in place, and if so, what is it? And as much details as you might be able to provide for the record.
I'm afraid I can't provide any details. I know that there is a parking agreement that has been negotiated with the city. I know that the city council approved that agreement on a unanimous vote yesterday. That agreement, I believe, is on your consent agenda today, the same agreement. And so, should you approve it, then we have a parking agreement, and parking has been adequately provided for. What... The details of that agreement, I'm afraid I can't speak to. I haven't been involved in it.
Well, I guess I'll turn to the manager and ask him the same question so we can get it on the record for this part of the discussion, because this is definitely not part of the consent area.
The city will provide us 132 spaces at no cost to the county. And that was... We examined what we needed. We examined how many customers would need adequate parking. And there's about 90 spaces adjacent to the building. We think that's sufficient for the Tag Office and the customers coming into the MABCD. And we estimated that we would need about... We needed 132 more spaces, and the city has agreed to offer that for free for that... For us.
How long's the agreement with the city?
For... The agreement lasts for a long time. I don't think there's an end date to it.
Okay. Well, I wanted to get at least the parking side of the equation on the record as part of this. Let me try and clarify. So, we're talking about the 90 spaces that are adjacent to the building that's part of the parcel that we'd be purchasing, plus 132 spaces that are presently part of the city's parking that's in that general vicinity, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
And 132 spaces are located in that area just to the... Where are they located?
Some are located to the east of the building. Some are located in the Gilbert Mosley...
That'd be a long walk.
That's a long walk for Gilbert Mosley, for the city's building and the parking lot across the street.
Across the street? Are you talking to the north or to the north... Across Main Street?
North, across Third Street.
Okay. By the Rounds and Porter Building or just south of the City Hall?
There's parking at Rounds and Porter, and there's parking south of City Hall, north of Third Street. And there's parking east of the building. So, there'll be three different locations.
Okay. I'd certainly like to know how the 132, how many are in which category? If you... Do you happen to have those, Mr. Manager?
Tom, do you have those? Oh, yes, I do. There's 74 spaces parking lot at the southwest corner of Third and Main. There's 40 spaces gated lot in the City Hall, and 18 spaces at Rounds and Porter. And that's all in the backup information in the agenda packet.
Well, I was looking very focused on here on this. Glad to get that on the record for our discussion this morning. Chris, let me ask you, is there a difference, in your opinion, on if we go to the market, if we went with a general obligation bond interest rates versus public building commission interest rates, as Sedgwick County did? Is there likely to be much of a difference in... From the market's perspective?
Typically, no. No, because our public building commission bonds are secured by a lease with Sedgwick County, and that lease is a general obligation of the county.
Okay. Well, I... Since we had this discussion about the resolution and being within three blocks of the courthouse, I wanted to get that on the record. I've, like Commissioner Ransaw, I've had a number of people ask me. I mean, we've got a proposal in front of us that we're going to be spending $700,000 over what the tax appraisal, and albeit, I'll admit, it's a tax appraisal. It's not a market appraisal in terms of the value. But in terms of what Class B office space could be here in the city and where we're at, that's a major concern for me. And my vote today is going to reflect the fact that we're looking at, as my math roughly, we're looking at spending approximately $54 per square foot in terms of the purchase price for this building. And with $16 million for remodeling, a cost that could go up to $174 per square foot to remodel. And we've got a similar building nearby, albeit about 10,000 square feet smaller. The figure I heard on it was it was $1.2 million, not $1.4. But even using that larger figure, it's still well under $20 per square foot. So, we're about two and a half times, at least two and a half times more in terms of purchase price. And I really would have liked to have looked at a wider group on this. And my vote today is going to reflect the fact that these numbers, in terms of what we're paying and what it's going to cost us, and I would certainly hope that we could... If we do go, if the majority that's here today decides to go ahead and we do start this plan, if we can't repair it when it comes up for the next time the vote... We vote on this, I'd certainly like to bring those costs down in terms of remodeling from the $16 million that was quoted today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ransaw.
Yeah. Quick question for Chris and Manager. I'm not sure which one. Why are we spending $5 million on a building when we have a comparable in the area that sold for $1.2 to $1.4?
The building that we purchased, the IRS building, was listed considerably higher than that. The price has come down. The buildings are not... I mean, you obviously want to make a comparison. In a walkthrough of the buildings, this building is much more suited to the kind of offices that we want to have. The configuration and the condition of the school district building, I think, is reflected in the price that was... They paid for it.
Three and a half to four million dollars difference?
Yeah. That is my understanding from the real estate folks that I've talked with.
Well, the real estate folks I've talked to say we shouldn't have spent more than $3 million on the building.
I don't know whose experts are smarter.
Well, my experts are the same ones that told me that cell tower was worth more than $280,000. And they were right.
They were right on that issue.
So, I trust my experts. So, I mean, that's my concern here. We're spending... But then you're adding the renovation. We're probably spending $9 million of taxpayer money more than what we really need to on this overall deal. So, I have some serious concerns.
Commissioner Peter John.
Yes. I just want to get that on the record. If we proceed today and things don't change in future votes, we're basically looking at it's $1.3 million for 10 years and almost $800,000 for the next 10 years. I mean, you're talking about over $2 million or close to... Basically, talking about $1 million a year. And that's a very significant cost. I think we've struggled. And we can spend some of the county reserves down on this and still retain our interest rates, in my opinion. Of course, the market will... Wall Street will come back and tell us what they truly think in terms of how we're handling the spending in that regard down the line. But having looked at these numbers, I just think we can... I think that this is... This is what's in front of us today is too much, and my vote today will reflect that fact. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. My comment, I don't see anyone else asking to speak. My comment is, is that we asked our staff to make a thorough search of the area, looking for the best potential site for this... For these facilities. They spent quite some time. They had a matrix out to evaluate and decide which building was best. And we had much of this discussion when we talked about making an offer on the building some time ago and talked about how it fit within the county courthouse, the government complex. It was downtown. The price of the building for $93,000 square feet was $50, $55 a square foot for the building. We know the building has a great spine, as they say, and all of its internal fundamental fixtures, heating and air conditioning, plumbing, electricity, and those sort of things. We know the building's fundamentally sound from its construction. We've had different viewpoints, obviously, on whether this is a good price or not a good price. good price. But the people I have talked to have indicated that this is a very good price for that building, and it meets our other requirements. The remodel cost that's been talked about, according to the information, we got actual construction, 7.8 million, and the architectural piece is going to be about $500,000. So, the total, the cost per square foot of the remodels is closer to $90 a square foot, if, if we want to argue about numbers and how we parse them out. But we have, in my opinion, made a legitimate arms-length transaction on a, on a good piece of property within our government complex footprint. We have a reasonable financing strategy. It appears that this satisfies two CIP planned-for expenditures. We talked about how this is, some of the debt services offset by savings in rental costs. I think that this is a good building. I think the numbers and all line up for me and my understanding of what would be a good investment of Sedgwick County money to continue to provide facilities for county services. I, I, I'm assuming it wasn't a, what's the right word? Some, some, I assume the commissioner wasn't charging us with some sort of activity when he used the word fleece. I guess that was just a figure of speech. But I don't think that we're fleecing anybody with this particular purchase and the way that we're planning to finance it. And I, in, in the controversy over this building and what the old USD 259 building sold for, the real estate folks that I've talked to says that that building is, is worth about what they paid for. And so, the main value of that building is the property it sits on rather than the structure itself. So, and, and you know, we can go back and forth with this for, for more hours if we like, but I think that our staff has led us to a very, very good solution for the space needs that we have, and I'm going to be supportive. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your comments, and appreciate the discussion of all, all my colleagues on this issue. But I would be remiss if I didn't point out the fact that the folks who purchased the, the school district building certainly have a heck of a lot more parking than the, than the IRS building currently possesses on its footprint. Thank you.
Is there further, Commissioner Norton?
I'm going to be supportive. First of all, I think it's about location, location, location. And over the years, particularly from our building community, they felt that the, the bringing together of the city-county permitting and inspection and code and everything would work better for them in a one-stop shop. We've had that conversation for over five years, and I think we came to a place where I think the building community, I don't want to speak for them, but I see Wes Gallion here, that this would be good for them. We also know that planning will move into that building. WAMPO will move into that building. Our environmental group that's really detached from Sedgwick County, and is, I've heard over the years, they're in a bad location, and why do we have them so far away? And then finally, the tag office. We know, we've struggled with that for six or seven years, how to get out of that murdout facility that just does not serve the public. For me, this is about customer convenience. You know, we're going to bring the appraiser and his group back, and all these other entities I just put in, talked about. And it's really a consolidation of government so that, and, you know, we talk about consolidation all the time. That's really what this is. It's bringing things all together and try to minimize cost and cut, and, and increase customer convenience for using government services. We can debate all day long whether it's apples and oranges, or apples and apples between the, the IRS building and the school district administration building. But at an arm-length transaction, that building sold for a lot less. And, and I understand why. Everything I've heard is that it's just not as good a building, and there's a reason the school district's getting out from under it. Now, I would understand that the buyer is going to have to put a major, major investment into it to, to rebuild it and to put it into some kind of functional form for his usage. So, I think we can debate that all day long. For me, it's about, we're moving some great government facilities into the downtown core area, and making it better for, and more convenient for the citizen to use that. I think that's going to be powerful. And at the end of the day, you know, with the bonding that we've got and the leverage we have, I think it's not going to be onerous. We, I also really don't want to look for the, the absolute cheapest building in downtown. Because if we go downtown, we'll find some that have been boarded up for, what, seven, eight years? We'd probably get them really cheap. But it would not serve the public, and I guarantee you, the renovation costs of them would be a lot more than what we're going to do at the IRS building. So, I'm going to be supportive today to move forward. And I think our staff has done a, a really good job of the due diligence to try to find us a location downtown that fits the needs and will be a good facility that the county can run for many generations, because we'll own it. We won't be leasing it all over the city. We'll be owning it, and we'll have a, a good facility for many generations. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I repeat, repeat my comments in terms of appreciating my fellow commissioners' comments on this issue. But I'm thinking back to several of the transactions we've had, and I appreciate Commissioner Ranzau mentioning the cell, the cell tower issue, and when that came before us here, because this is strictly a matter of value. We do need a replacement for our tag office. I've heard more discussions on that. But the question is, at what price? And, but in the past, I know this commission has been willing to try and get the best value for the taxpayers' dollars. And my concern and my vote today is going to reflect the, the fact that while this is going to be an improvement, nor the question I have is at what price? And the total cost, and looking at the total expenses and the obligations we'd begin today if, if this measure approves in its current form. And so, I very much appreciate my colleagues' discussion and getting this on the public record as we go forward, because we, we do need an improvement here, both for the tag office, M A B C D, and, and, but, but the question is, is, is what is an appropriate price to pay and, and obligation, what we're looking at going forward? So, my votes today, my vote today is going to reflect those facts. Thank you.
Commissioners, any more discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
There's no motion.
Oh, we don't have a motion. I thought, well, then don't call the vote yet.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take staff's recommended action.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Authorize Chair to sign the agreement. Discussion on the motion, Commissioner Ranzau.
Mr. Chairman, for reasons I previously stated, I would like to make a substitute motion that we table this and instruct staff to seek a 30-day extension in our real estate agreement for us to continue our due diligence. And in the event that the seller does not agree to that, then we cancel the contract altogether.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to defer for 30 days. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Skelton?
No.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Chairman Enru?
No. Substitute motion fails. The underlying motion is still before us. Commissioner Ranzau?
Mr. Chairman, I'm disappointed in that vote. I do support the, the idea of consolidating these organizations. However, we're going to spend millions of dollars of taxpayer dollars, more than what we really need to. That's what I mean by fleecing the taxpayers. I don't think that's appropriate good business, so I can't support this, this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion? We now have a motion on the table. So, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Peter John?
Nope.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Skelton?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Chairman Enru?
Aye. And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Item H, resolution declaring it necessary to build or repair existing bridges in the county under the authority of KSA 68-1103, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost thereof, and providing for publication of the resolution as required by law.
Commissioners, this resolution that's before you is intended to serve much the same purpose as the one that you just adopted. In this instance, the resolution declares an intent to make improvements to a variety of bridges that have been included in the county's adopted capital improvement program, declares those, those bridge improvements necessary, and indicates the commission's intent to reimburse any costs that might be incurred in the completion of those projects prior to the sale of bonds with the proceeds of the bond sale. Once again, we expect to sell bonds to fund these projects in late 2015, at the same time as we sell the bonds with relation to, with regard to the IRS building. The bridges that are the subject of this resolution include a bridge on 183rd Street West between 47th and 55th Streets South, a bridge on 87th Street South between 295th and 311th Streets West, a bridge on 45th Street North between Broadway and Hydrilic, a bike pedestrian bridge to be constructed on Meridian over the Wichita Valley Center floodway, a bridge on 143rd Street East between 63rd and 71st Streets South, a bridge on 93rd Street North between Meridian and Seneca, one on 183rd Street North, I'm sorry, 183rd Street West between Central and 13th Street North, a bridge on 61st Street North between 279th and 295th Streets West, and finally, a bridge on Hydrilic between 69th and 77th Streets North. Those bridges have a cumulatively, a cumulative estimated cost of $5,840,000, of which, excuse me, the adopted funding plan that is contained in the capital improvement program calls for $4 million to be paid for with bond proceeds. And so, the resolution that's before you calls for the issuance of $4 million of bonds plus transaction costs that are estimated to be $60,000. The debt service on those bonds is estimated to be $272,000 per year, and as was the case on the prior transaction, this debt service has been included in the county's financial forecasts. There is no expectation that any of these bonds would require a, a mill levy increase for the county. The bonds are not subject to the county's statutory debt ceiling, that 3% threshold that I discussed with regard to the last item. But these bonds are subject to the county's debt policy, and as was the case before, the issuance of these bonds will not cause the county to exceed the debt limit that is contained in the county's debt policy, and that is defined by a series of, of financial ratios. This resolution was drafted by Joe Norton and his colleagues at Gilmore &amp; Bell, the county's bond counsel. Joe is in the room, and I'm sure he would be happy to answer any questions about the, the technicalities or legalities of the resolution. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions as well. And if you have no questions, then I recommend that you adopt the resolutions before you.
All right, thank you. Do you have a comment from Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got, I've got, I think, perhaps a typo that I've, I've found in, in the backup here, and I think it's important in terms of the cost estimate to get it on the, to at least get a clarification on the record on page 80 in our backups. It would be on the agenda, and I'm going to maybe direct this to Mr. Weber as well as to Mr. Cronus. The cost estimate that I've got on B462, which is a pedestrian bridge in Meridian, the number I've got here looks like, it actually says $15,001. The commas are in the wrong place, and the bridge on 143rd Street East, and I think they're trying to get to the footnote, but, but there's a typo there, and I wanted to get the correct numbers on the record and clarify it for the record. The bridge on 143 East between 63rd and 71st Streets South, it says here $6,902,000. And then the bridge on 61st Street North between Sioux 79th and 295th would be $5,300,000. And the bridge on Hydrilic between 69th and 77th Streets North would be $5,400,000, which obviously that's way over the total of 5.8 million there. So, I think we're, and it looks like there's, I think, an effort to get some footnotes added there. But, but I wanted to get the correct numbers for the cost estimates onto the record for this discussion. And I think those numbers should be, for the first project I mentioned, $1,500,000, second project, $690,000, the third, $500,000, and the fourth, $500,000. Am I correct, either Mr. Weber or Mr. Cronus, on those numbers?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Well, I wanted to get those on the record this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, we've been borrowing this $4 million every year for quite a while now. The exception, I think, is this year.
Yeah, and most years, yes.
And most years. So, this has been a thorn in my side since I've been on the commission, and I'm going to oppose this again today. The last time I checked, I mean, you created a spreadsheet for me, we were, you know, we borrow $4 million a year. But because of principal and interest payments, we pay $4.9 million a year in principal and interest. So, we've dug ourselves in the hole, and to the point that we're paying more in principal interest than what we're getting out. Beyond that, we take $1.6 million out of the road and bridge fund, sales tax money, to pay principal interest. So, we, the net benefit on a yearly basis to public works is $2.4 million. So, we're borrowing $4 million a year, but spending $4.9 million in principal and interest, and getting $2.4 million worth of benefit in roads and bridges. And that, once again, in my estimation, is not sound fiscal policy. We need to dig ourselves out of that hole. I mean, for, think about it. If we had never gone down this road, we'd have $4.9 million. You could spend $2.4 million in roads and bridges, which is what we're doing now. You'd have an extra $2.5 million to spend on whatever. Reduce taxes. I don't know. Whatever. So, I'm going to continue to make this argument. No one has been able to bring in any information to me in the last four years to explain to me how this is a sound fiscal policy, to spend $4.9 million of taxpayer money each year to get $2.4 million worth of roads and bridges. I would encourage our commission to rethink this policy and implement a plan that would dig us out of this hole. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other discussion? Do we need a motion, Madam Clerk? Or is there, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we take staff's recommended action.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second from Commissioner Norton. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Skelton?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Chairman Enru?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next item?
Item I, resolution for the allocation of inter-fund transfer of unexpected 2014 budget authority to the Equipment Reserve Fund.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Lindsay Povoso, your Budget Director. The item before you is a resolution authorizing the transfer of unexpended 2014 budget authority to the Equipment Reserve Fund for eight projects, which are outlined for you in the agenda item in attached resolution. The first six transfers are proposed to occur from the General Fund. The first is for a transfer of $2 million for election equipment replacement. The Election Commissioner has advised that the current fleet of equipment will need to be replaced in 2017 at a cost of about $7 million. This transfer would allow the county to add $2 million to the 2.5 million in funds set aside as a 2013 year-end transfer in anticipation of the purchase. The second is for a transfer of $500,000 to provide a pool of funding for the equipment replacement planning program. The third is for a transfer of $162,900 to provide both the hardware and software licenses to upgrade the county's servers using the Windows 2003 operating system, which we know will go- Windows two thousand three operating system, which we know will go end-of-support in July two thousand fifteen. The fourth is a transfer of one hundred thousand dollars to replace a mass spectrometer at the Forensic Science Center toxicology lab that is currently out of service. Another transfer for forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars is requested to replace the air handler unit, unit, excuse me, and the main D I O I T data center. The unit is fourteen years old, and the service technician has recommended replacement. The final transfer requested from the General Fund is for twenty-six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars to purchase a fiber channel switch. The county has a total of three switches, which allow for data to be saved from county computers to county networks, all three went end-of-service in February two thousand fourteen. This will provide one backup switch in the event of failure. The final two transfers included in today's request are from the Emergency Medical Services Fund. A transfer of one hundred twelve thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars for ambulance mobile computer terminal units is recommended. These units provide ambulance crews with access to nine-one-one data, navigation and routing software, and other operational resources that are needed by the ambulance crews. The original three-year warranty expired on these units in two thousand fourteen. The final transfer requested today is for ninety-seven thousand two hundred seven dollars for onboard mobile gateways also in our ambulances. The models in use now are no longer manufactured, and support won't be provided beyond two thousand fourteen. The gateways are used for managing, deploying, and dispatching ambulances. They also provide GPS and automatic vehicle location data to the Emergency Communications Center, nine-one-one, and to the deployment system. As proposed, the requested action will transfer two million eight hundred thirty-three thousand six hundred fifty dollars from the General Fund and two hundred nine thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars from the Emergency Medical Services Fund to the Equipment Reserve Fund for a total of three million forty-three thousand dollars, three hundred, or, I'm sorry, I did that again, a total of three million forty-three thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars, excuse me. As, I'm happy to stand for any questions, otherwise I recommend you approve this resolution.
All right, thank you, Lindsay. I think you briefed all of us about these transfers earlier in the week, but is there any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Norton?
Uh, just for the record, all this money's not gonna be expended this year, it just moves around into funds that will make it available to, to start building up funding for, like, the election equipment and everything. Is that correct?
Right. The, the money transfers out of these funds, so it'll be an expense there, but revenue into the new fund, right?
Yeah. So, it's a net, no loss, no, excuse me, no loss, no gain until the money's really expended in future years. Is that correct?
Uh, from an accounting, accountant's perspective, absolutely.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you. I, if I can just build on that point, at least in the election commissioner's case, we've got a, kind of a three-year effort in that regard. Is that correct?
Yes, we started setting aside money, money in two thousand thirteen, and we don't expect to make the expenditure until two thousand seventeen. Um, and at that time, well in advance of that, we'll be working through what the, the real number, what the right technology is.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other questions? What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, um, move that we take, we adopt the, uh, resolution. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Skelton.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Chairman Enruh.
Aye.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next item?
Item J, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on December eleven, two thousand fourteen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on December eleventh results in two items that we bring before you this morning. Item number one is fuel for the Fleet Department. This recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from M J Murphy LLC at the prices listed above and to establish a contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. And the final item, number two, preferred senior supplement Medicare Plan F for Human Resources. Recommendation is to accept renewal rates as listed above from Coventry Healthcare of Kansas Incorporated for a total cost of ninety-eight thousand five hundred and five dollars for two thousand fifteen with a one-year option to renew. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
Thank you. Would you have a question from Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you kind of walk us through on the first item, since that's, uh, uh, fuel, uh, and for the Fleet Department, with the rapid fluctuations that we've had in fuel prices, whether you're talking gasoline or diesel? How is this agreement going to work over time with the prices moving so rapidly? They've both gone up and down, it seems like, uh, and what we're looking at in the duration of this contract and agreement?
This contract is based on the OPUS, which is the Oil Price Information Service, so it's merely a market index, and each week that price is published, and for the subsequent purchases the following week, a fee is added to that price in each of these categories that has been quoted by the vendor, and that's the price that we pay. That doesn't eliminate the fluctuation of the market prices, but what it does is establishes firm pricing, uh, for the fees that are added to the fluctuating prices, unfortunately, in the market as the way it stands today.
Well, it, it certainly, it's, it's been fluctuating downward recently, which is from a consumer benefits positive, but, as we all know, it hasn't, it's, it's a two-way street, and, and, uh, there's no guarantees going forward.
Yes, sir.
I think that's important to get on the record this morning. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I plan to be supportive of this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. What's the will of the board?
I move we approve the recommendation of the Board and bids of contracts.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Skelton.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Chairman Enruh.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda before you, and I'd recommend you approve it.
Commissioners, what's the?
So moved.
So seconded.
Thank you. There are many, quite a few items on the consent agenda, but we've reviewed all those, so, um, is there any discussion? Mr. Norton?
Just a reference that we are, uh, part of the resolution is destroying, uh, documents that have aged out for our policy, and I think it's always good to have on the record any time that we've saved records for many years and, but because of our policy and storage costs and everything, we'll start eliminating them.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, I'll just, uh, want to add on that this also, we've got an item here in terms of, uh, CONMED and extend, um, extending the agreement for medical services, and that's always been a challenge, and with the operation of the jail and the large number of people who are being detained there, so, um, we've got some, a number of items have been mentioned that are part of this consent agenda, and I thought that that was also one item that at least deserves a good comment this morning.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any further comment? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Skelton.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Chairman Enruh.
Aye.
Um, Commissioners, we're at the point of other on this agenda. Are there other things you would like to speak about before we go to the fire district? Uh, Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, arguably, today is perhaps historically the most important day in Wichita's history, December seventeenth. Uh, what happened here on this date, I shouldn't say here, it didn't occur here, but it occurred in our country and occurred a long ways from here, but, and, and I'm not referring to the Simpsons first episode appearing twenty-five years ago, uh, but, uh, but other important things that have occurred here, uh, France recognized the, the American government during the Revolutionary War on this date in seventeen seventy-seven, and a hundred and eleven years ago on this date, two bicycle mechanics from Dayton, Ohio, down in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, managed to get the first airplane flight, and despite the efforts, in fact, there'd been a major, this was a competition of sorts with a fellow from, from Washington who had the backing of the Smithsonian who was trying to do this, but Orville and Wilbur Wright had the first powered aircraft flight, only went a hundred and twenty feet.